All right, it is 10 o'clock. We will go ahead and get started. If you would bow your heads for the invitation. Father, thank you for this day and thank you for the opportunity to come together. And Father, we thank you for the progress with COVID. We give you all the credit. Father, we just pray for wisdom as we begin this meeting. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Item first is presentation on UTPB master plan. Dr. Woodley.
Okay, here we go.
Sandy, are you there? This is Wendell. Sandy was just there and
I can see you.
Sandy, we can hear you.
Good morning.
I want that to go away. I'd rather see the people. Randy, can you unshare so I can try to share the screen?
Right there. This is what's being
Oh.
Randy's. So you're good. I'll just show you whatever they're presenting is.
Know what?
Michael, I'm muted.
He's not in his office.
There we go. Michael, can you see that?
No, we can't. Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Does he look like he's in his office? He's not. Yes, he is in his office.
The mic on Dr. Woodley's computer is turned on. We can hear you.
We can hear you, Tatum.
Now she's off.
Now you're on mute. You were not
Can you hear me now?
Yes, and it's fun.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
We have to take a deep breath on our end. It shows that we don't have audio, so we're so glad that I'll get out of the break. Hello, friends. All right, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to give you a quick overview of our strategic planning around our campus master plan. And I want to start off by saying that we want to be joined at the hip with the city. I mean, we serve this region and we serve the city of Odessa and Midland. It's really important to me as the university president that all of the plans that we have elevate and lift up what's going on in the city of Odessa. We want to be part of economic development. We want to bring more jobs here. We want to provide the workforce. We want to bring revenue into the hotels and the motels. I mean, so a lot of what we'll talk about today is really looking out over the next 10 years to determine what can we do in collaboration with our friends in this region to elevate the work of the university for service. And so that's what I want to be able to talk about a little bit today. I want to start just very quickly and talk about what we're trying to do in our strategic plan. I think you can see it up here. We have a very bold vision over the next 10 years. And the most important thing that we want to do is to double the number of graduates. We want to provide a University of Texas education to as many people as we can in our region so that they can participate in the economy of our region, so that they can be that workforce that's needed. And so we're very focused not only on producing a high number of graduates, but also that our graduates and our programs and the curriculum in our programs are applicable and to the needs of our region. And so that's really an important part of us. You can see some of the other things. Of course, we want to be able to double the research grants and the contracts. Now, for us, that's more than just basic research. We believe that University of Texas Permian Basin over the next two decades will become like Texas Tech in many ways. We're focusing on research, but the research that is applied and relevant to this region, that's our niche. That's what we're trying to do. Not just basic research per se, but really relevant research to what's going on. Water and energy and geology and biosciences. Those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. So on the next slide, I wanted to talk a little bit about, you know, our major themes in our strategic plan. Student success, as we talked about, is the number one thing that we're here to do. And that serves all of us if we're able to graduate, you know, strong leaders in our community. Service to the region, we'll talk about that a little more. As I said before, we're here to serve. And we have a role to play as the university in this city to be able to provide, you know, some of the other benefits that will resonate for years to come in our community. Creativity and responsible stewardship. We know that this city has made lots of investments in the university and we're grateful for that. But we want to make sure that we continue to be worth that investment. This is just a little graph that shows kind of where we are now. We're growing. We're growing in the right areas. We're working very hard on enrollment management to be able to, as I said before, focus on the types of programs that are needed here and to really create not only the non-traditional student population, which is important to us, but also a more traditional population as well. More students on our campus, more students thriving in our community. Now let's get to the master plan. When you look here, you can see the basic layout of the University of Texas Permian Basin. You know, we didn't really began this until 1973. So for some of you, I know for me, I was, you know, I was around in 1973, but it's, we're a young university. Next slide. This gives you a sense of the two campuses that we do have. Obviously, we're talking today mainly about the main campus, but we also have some really important things going on at the Midland campus that also serves Odessa and the region as well. The next slide here, this kind of just gives you a sense of our existing footprint. Wendell, if you can show where the Mesa building is, you can see right there. The purple is our new kinesiology building. Thank you for your investment in that. I mean, oh my goodness, it is an amazing facility and we would like to offer every single one of you a tour of this facility, both on the academic side, but also on the athletic side. You know, we do believe that growing our competitiveness and the number of students who participate in intercollegiate activities is a really important part of what happens in this community. And we're excited about this frontward facing facility that will really make a difference in our recruiting, but also will make a difference in the amenities that are necessary to really keep faculty and staff and students here. So you can see where the housing is. And over here, all of the other sports fields, we're going to talk a little bit about some aspirations that we have in partnership with you as well, again, on the economic development side. So the next slide. You know, we're, well, let's go back, Wendell, to the easements. I mean, this is kind of what we had to worry about, you know, when we were building on our campus until last year. We're grateful that Chevron has released the drill sites. Almost all of them in the coming year will be released and then we'll be able to have access to building on our entire campus. And I think that's a really positive step forward for this community. And we're excited to be able to have more flexibility, if you will, as we grow over the next two decades. Now, this right here gives you a little sense of the master plan that we're looking at. So again, you can see where the Mesa building and the new kinesiology building. But we also have aspirations for additional academic space as we grow our student body from about 6,500 to 12,000. We think that's what we'll be able to achieve over the next 10 to 15 years. So Wendell is showing some new academic quadrant there. Plenty of space there to put new academic buildings as we grow. If you look at the blue section on the corner, that is a planned public-private partnership development. Let me spend just a few minutes talking about our planning phase here. Grow Odessa has provided a $250,000 planning grant. And with that, we have the architects and the designers, as we speak, working on what could be the aspiration for, you know, for this corner. This is obviously the corner of JBS and university. And it includes planning for a convocation center, an arena that would be multipurpose and that would be available beyond UTPB. We think this could be a revenue generator for the city. It could bring in, you know, tournaments to the city. This complex as designed would also have an aquatics center as well. So there's, you know, the swim meet, you know, potential. The arena itself could be used for, as I said, music events, but also basketball, volleyball, cheerleading, tumbling, all of those kinds of things, you know, could be included in a tournament destination that would bring business to the city.
And Sandy, Aaron from JLL is on here to talk about what they have been tasked with by us.
I would love to hear from them. I didn't know they were on yet. Yes, please, Aaron.
Hi, Dr. Woodley.
Hey.
Thanks for having us all. We really appreciate it. And we can elaborate a little bit on what Dr. Woodley started to talk about. So I work with a company called JLL. We're an international real estate services firm. But within that company, I sit within a group that specializes 100% with the public sector and higher education. So everything we do is consulting on projects that have more than just, say, a profit motive to it. Typically, these projects have economic development motives, public policy motives, broader objectives than just making sure that we have a healthy bottom line. That said, part of our charge here is to make sure that this convocation facility is feasible and does pencil out as a business, right? So we want to make sure that everything that we can do here is eventually sustainable, supportable financially. So what my group is doing in partnership with Page Architecture is kind of assessing feasibility of this project from a few different angles. One, what is the base number of seats that this project will actually need? And to understand that, we have to look at the various sources of demand. Obviously, one of those would be UTPB events, name of convocation. But more broadly, and also their athletic program, but more broadly, what else can this facility serve? Can it serve as a concert venue? Can it serve as a meeting space? Can it help to be sort of a nice new kind of shining star as far as, you know, meeting of large scale entertainment venue for the entire Permian Basin, not just Odessa, the entire region? And so what we're doing right now is kind of assessing those different types of demand to get a sense of the size of the facility and comparing that to the existing facilities that are in the market, the various event venues, the large sports complex in Midland, and just getting a better sense of kind of where we fall in that market, in that range, so that we get a good sense of what is feasible. And I think you all have seen that probably the biggest challenge, the biggest issue with a lot of new entertainment facilities, sports arenas, and other sort of event venues is that they can be built too big and there are a lot of cities out there struggling to keep them full and having to come in on the backend and support them financially. That's what we're trying to avoid here and making sure that neither the university nor the city has of having to backstop this project. And that's why it's an important part of what we're doing to make sure that we recommend a market supportable size. And then, Dr. Woodley, I'm not sure, did you want me to talk about some of the other aspects of our study, the housing?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yes.
So this is not just going to be a facility on an island, especially because of our partnership with Page, who, by the way, Paige is still on the call today. You know, we're trying to help the university imagine something that's more comprehensive, more dynamic. So this is not just going to be an entertainment facility on an island. We also want to see what other uses can we support to really kind of create this dynamic mixed-use environment? And a big thing that we're looking at is housing. And there's a couple of angles for the housing. One is, I think, a large, a big challenge that universities face, not just UTPB, but many universities across the country, is retention and recruitment of high-quality faculty and staff. And oftentimes, one of the biggest issues with that is a lack of either affordable and or quality housing. I think for a lot of cities that are similar to Odessa and Midland, both with similar kind of economic makeup, but also those areas with kind of a major university presence, see a lot of housing that's very expensive and you see a lot of housing that's very inexpensive. You don't have a lot in the middle. So what we're trying to do right now is assess the demand for faculty and staff and understand what is missing and how can we meet that demand? And how can we make it a part of this broader project integrated into this event venue? We're also looking at broader workforce housing, not just for UTPB faculty and staff, but for the city's first responders, for firefighters and police officers, for the city's teachers. How can we introduce more housing that makes it easier and more compelling to attract, you know, more K through 12 educators? And how can we also produce more housing that attracts more nurses? And we're really trying to hit, you know, that kind of range of income level that you would typically see for your typical nurse, teacher, firefighter, officer, and understand how can we better support that type of housing? And how can perhaps we introduce that housing on or near campus as a part of this broader project? We're looking at a couple of other uses too, just to make sure that we kind of fill in the gaps and make this truly dynamic again, so it's not just a venue on an island. Really kind of integrate it into the community and kind of have this sort of seamless transition from campus to the rest of the community. So that's our charge. That's sort of what we're looking at today. And, Dr. Woodley, Wendell, am I forgetting anything?
Well, thank you. Maybe talk a little bit about the timeline. I mean, when do we think we'll have, you know, because we, you know, as we work through the design and the, you know, the important assessment, we'll want to make sure that we keep the city informed so that they can have input as well. So what's your process and timeline on the project?
Yeah, absolutely. So I would say that, you know, the thing to keep in mind is this is, this is a vision that we're outlining, right? We're not designing a facility. We're not designing housing. We're not going to be seeing shovels in the ground directly as a result of this effort. We're just trying to outline for the university and for the city what's possible. That in mind, we're talking about a four-month engagement here. We're aiming to be wrapped up sometime before Thanksgiving, maybe going a little bit into December. But otherwise, you know, our objective is to help outline what that vision looks like. And then critically, and a big reason why JLL is a part of this, and we're not just designing something, we're providing a strategy and a pathway to implementing it. So as part of our report, we're starting, we're going to say, okay, at the end of four months, here's a strategy over the next one, two, maybe three years, actually realizing this vision. So at the end of that four months, our report will include some pretty discreet steps that the university can take in partnership with the city and in partnership with other organizations such as Odessa Economic Development and others, actually realizes vision and really pursue a true public-private partnership model that can help bring private capital into help with this. But that'll be a sort of a longstanding next step that'll happen. Our study, our kind of visioning exercise and our bookending what the market will support and then providing a path to implementation, it's about four months. And we're about, we're about four weeks or so into this, three weeks into this. So we're aiming for about Thanksgiving, thereabouts.
And just so you all know, Michael Marrero was asked to be served on this committee to select the part of the RFQ. So, Michael, thank you for serving on that.
You know, and as Aaron mentioned, you know, this is really just the first, you know, inspirational visioning step that gives us enough information to understand what could be the scope of the project and also the assessment of what's, you know, what we can support here. The university will have to be able to engage in a public-private partnership of some form. And there are lots of different models out there to be able to implement this vision at some point in the future. We do not have the debt capacity to support it. However, as Aaron mentioned, part of this will include mixed-use space that would include cafes and maybe restaurants and other revenue-producing businesses on that property that can also be folded into the business model to support the debt service, you know, to be able to, you know, to work on the project. You know, we've had conversations with Scott Murray and Greg Williams. There is the possibility that they may have some use for this space as well. They may be interested in being a partner. We plan to reach out to the aquatic center to see if that's something that they might be willing to support and to help, you know, manage. So we're really in the early stages here of envisioning the development on that corner and how it can not only support the university, but also support the entire city. I would also say, in, you know, the, on the other end of our campus where all of the sports fields are, let's talk a little bit about that because there's a connection here. And that is the aspiration of the city, the aspiration of the university in partnership with the city as we work on the next contract. We have about a year left on our agreement and our contract with the city in managing those sports fields. You know, we feel very strongly that we want to maintain and even elevate the service to the associations and the local volunteers who have opportunities to bring the kids in our community and the youth and play on those fields. That's an important part of what we want to do. So we will be interested not only in maintaining that, but also elevating that. We believe that there's an opportunity for the city of Odessa to become even better than Hobbs, New Mexico in drawing tournaments to this location. We have a lot to offer here. It's important that we work with our hotels and our motels to fill up those, you know, those spaces on the weekend and have this vibrant sort of tournament space, I would say. And the university wants to serve in that way. And so as we work with you over the coming year to envision what that may be, just know that the center, the aquatic center and the convocation space can be part of a broader, long-term project with these other sports fields to do just that. Pure economic development, vibrance on our campus, getting the community involved, entertainment, sports. I mean, I think that's a really important aspect of our long-term vision in conjunction with our partners at the city and other partners. On the, I'm going to put out a few more things and then I think, David, we can just stop and get some questions before we go further, while we've got Aaron and others on the phone. But the other thing, if you'll scroll down to the other slide, Wendell, to show this space. One of the things in conjunction with the tournament destination and service to the region, we are interested in the university becoming a very open park-like space for the community. We're centrally located here in Odessa. We know that we have a lot of people who walk on our existing trail. You can see on this, the dotted line is the existing trail. It's about three miles that circles, you know, the one part of our campus. But we would like to open that up to have recreational trails and also living, learning opportunities on those trails way beyond that one piece. We have been excited about the work with MPO on the biking trail. And we are actively working to try to raise grants and money to be able to have, you know, 25 or 30 miles worth of safe hiking, biking trails that will trailhead on our campus and go to downtown Odessa potentially. And also through our Midland campus at the Wagner Noel and on down to the Scarborough Sports Complex. This could be 30 miles of really amazing space. But we don't want to just do a concrete trail. We want to make sure that it is a learning opportunity, that it, you know, that it provides sustainability in water retention and other things like that. So you'll see at the bottom of this, there are a couple of areas where in the long term we can do a nature preserve and a water feature through those drainage ditches that could also be functional for the city and for the university in capturing that water when needed. But also to provide a really beautiful place for our community to go and take their families, you know, to spend time in nature on our campus. The, you know, the other part long-term is potentially, as we grow our athletics, it may be that we need our own smaller football stadium. You can see where that would be just to the, you know, to the left, to the right of the kinesiology building. There's enough space to put that facility there. That's not our highest priority right now. Our higher priority, I think, right now is developing the corner of JBS and university. We think that will go a long way for the economic development that we're looking at and also some of the other needs of the institution as well. Anything I'm forgetting to mention, Wendell?
No, just that we're looking at doing a plaza area up here on the corner of 42nd and JBS. And I know that we've had conversations of potentially working on an easement with the city to do a speed-up lane here on 42nd Street. But we're not looking to develop this area. We're looking at making this a front porch or a plaza area for the campus.
Right. We're, our 50th anniversary is coming up in about four years. And we think that signature place right there, moving back the stragglers, the art piece that's there, moving that back and creating a kind of a community park space that will link in with whatever else that we're doing. I think that, you know, could be an important piece of what we do. The Ellen Noel Art Museum is undergoing a capital campaign to elevate and renovate the museum. The walking trail that we're talking about can connect to that so that people can get on the trail at any point and then, you know, have a learning opportunity to do that and also to the JBS Presidential Museum as well. Make that corridor, if you will, a little more community-friendly so that those activities can be part of what families would do.
And also, Sandy, to point out that in our master plan, not only are we looking at keeping the sports fields, we're looking at expanding and potentially adding some fields, leaving these as placeholders.
Yes, I think the city right now is undergoing an assessment with their parks plan to look at what may be needed if we could become competitive in tournaments. And so we may need to add some more fields. There may need to be turf on some of these fields, elevating it. The walking trail, as you can see, we want to expand it throughout the entire campus, including on those fields. We have a wonderful splash pad that's Junior League put in. You know, having better access to that on these system of trails that the community can use. I think it really allows the university to step up and serve even a greater community purpose than we already do. And it would help the university in our recruiting and students and staff and, you know, being able to maintain high-level faculty and staff here. But I think it also becomes a really important economic opportunity, revenue generator for the city. So I'm going to stop there. We'll talk a little bit about a few other things if we have time, but there, if there are questions, we'd love to answer them.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, this is Peggy. Sandy, how big is that space on the corner of University and JBS Parkway? What's this footage?
Do we know?
I want to say it's about 130 acres.
Wow, okay. It's big. Yeah, I didn't have a frame of reference, but I wasn't thinking it was that big. So there's really a lot of opportunity on that corner.
Is that where that statue is sitting at where the gentleman on the horse and the cattle is coming through in that area?
That's where it is.
No, that is up here on the corner.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the
Empty Baron Corner across the Hooters and Wendy's.
Oh, okay. All right. That'd be good if you developed that area and make it something over there that it can get useful.
Absolutely.
And one other thing to point out to you all, over here on the bottom right-hand side, you'll see this gray area. What we've been working on is leaving this as, quote, a drill island. The mineralite owners of the property, what we'd like to do is just hold space for them if forever in the future they needed to access minerals, that this would be a spot for them to do that if a permit was actually even approved.
Wendell, show where the potential housing area, faculty and staff village housing area might be.
This, so this is the area down in here. Again, depends on how our friends at JLL and Page can situate this. There's many different ways of arranging this. Something that I would love to ask you all, if you have time, is to come out and I'd love to stand right over. This was a drill site that has been capped. And, you know, I stood out here with a few people. people and they're just in awe of how much space is out here. You don't realize that. And, and remember that we can fit, this is the Mesa Building, we can fit three more Mesa Buildings in here if we wanted to. So we have...
Yeah, academic, in the expanded academic corridor. And so, and so again, I think as we, as we, as we dream together and work through this over the next year or so, I really do think that, you know, developing this prime location here in a way that is mutually beneficial for the city and the university is just a winner. I mean, it's a winner for all of us. And we look forward to spending a lot of time with you and whoever would like to be interested as we finish these assessments and look at the next steps, you know, as we look to find a way to, you know, to, to realize these dreams in a way, as I said before, that's mutually beneficial. On your parks plan, I know that you are, we've been working very closely with Michael and, and Steve and others as they're, you know, as you're doing your assessment on all of that, you know, I think, again, there's an opportunity for some low-hanging fruit in some early projects that will allow us to expand the, the parks on our campus for the benefit of the city.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
This is Deitra. Over, looking at your map, on the corner of University and Loop 338, it looks like there are some proposed buildings that are to the east of, the east and the south of that drill site. Is that correct?
Yeah, those, those are, are just a, a place where we could, you know, do some buildings. We, we still believe that at some point we will have to allocate a space for the STEM Academy. You know, they are currently internal, you know, in the middle of our campus, but we're working with them on how can we develop a, you know, a partnership that would allow them to have new facilities. This could also be a place where, correct me if I'm wrong, Wendell, is this where one of the potential sites would be on that for faculty and staff housing too?
Yeah, potentially, yes.
But we don't know what that may be yet. We, we still, until we can get all the assessments in and figure out where is the best space for the STEM Academy and also fact, how, I think right here in the middle too, maybe a possible, if you go to the top of the gray area, right there, that really could be housing as well, right? So that was a vision of maybe that's where the faculty and staff, the nursing and the teaching housing could be, be right on the loop of 338. So we, we haven't finalized any of that until we can finish the assessment, but those are just options, I think.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'd just like to make a statement. This is Dewey, Dr. Woodley, and I just want to thank you so much for the forward thinking that we have with this plan. And not only that, but the incorporating with the possible partnership with the city of Odessa, I just think that is absolutely fabulous. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate it. You know, the city has always been a good partner to the university and we hope we've been a good partner as well and we would like to continue that because we're going to need each other, I think.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And it's great to have, you know, these opportunities to, to dream together. It's an exciting set of projects for us.
Thank you.
Mayor, this is Michael. One of the conversations that we need to continue with the university, and Dr. Woodley mentioned it, is the lease on the property for the fields. I, you know, we've had initial discussions and, and I think their plans and, and Dr. Woodley, if I mischaracterize anything, please, please correct me. But what you guys are envisioning is essentially being the ones who would allocate the fields for play and kind of run concessions. I think certainly that, that's something that, that we, we should consider, but there are other implications that I think we still need to talk through and that is, and I've mentioned to you guys, I think there needs to be some conversations with the associations because they rely on those concessions. So I think in terms of that, if we could just have that conversation and flush those details out and then come back at some point to the City Council and be able to present them a good working lease agreement that takes into account all of the issues and, things that might, that might impact what we do out there.
Yeah, appreciate that, Michael. You know, let me just talk, address that for just a few moments. As I mentioned earlier when we started, I mean, our, our vision, I think, is in sync with the city's vision in the sense of this is service to the community. The youth in this community need to be able, these volunteer associations, we don't want to change any of the access that they have to the fields. In fact, we would like to increase the participation in our community for these fields. And also, we believe with professional management from the university, this could also, on the weekends and in other areas, not detract from that really important mission, but also achieve economic development in the, in the form of becoming a tournament destination. In order for that to be realized, it will take professional management, recruiting of these tournaments to come, making sure that you can schedule all the fields appropriately, elevate the concessions in a way that it becomes a much bigger revenue generator, generating opportunity. We don't, and, and we want to make sure that these volunteer associations obviously have the resources that they need and they've come to expect to be able to run those, those enterprises. And so as Michael said, we'll be working with the city and with those associations to develop MOUs in advance so that everybody gets what they need and we elevate the, the use of the university's assets here on these fields.
Yeah, and I think just, Sandy, if I could, just the other kind of complimentary items to that is understanding from the city's perspective what that maintenance looks like for us in the future. Obviously with those fields being organized a bit differently than they are today, does that mean more maintenance for us? So all of those things will, will also have to play a role in this.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? You want to continue, Sandy?
Yeah, just want to show, just, you know, a quick connection. If you'll scroll down, Wendell, we want to be able to, you know, to also show some other transformation concepts that we have on the campus. This is a, an opportunity for us to really elevate the spaces on the campus. We've talked a little bit already about the projects that, that, on the corner in the, the trails, but we're looking to be able to, you know, improve the signage, for example, and open up the front of the Mesa Building so that it's more inviting, people know where the front door is. We have already secured some money to start renovating the lobbies and the signage and some of that. The quad that we have, if you'll kind of look at that, Wendell will show that corner. Right now it's hard to get around in there, but this would allow us an opportunity to have more space for the students to hang out, you know, outdoor, outdoor areas, all of the things that would be helpful for us, you know, to be able to, you know, to be able to recruit and retain students and to beautify the campus in a way that not only is it more functional, but it's also more inviting, you know, to the community. I want to take just a few minutes to talk a little bit about the, the connection between our campus here in Odessa and Midland. So if you'll scroll down, one of the things, this is our existing footprint with the Wagner Noel and the seed and the new engineering building. We have the pond out there. You know, we have room for more academic and research growth, but we also want to extend our vision out there. We're looking to try to acquire some more land. We haven't acquired the land yet. We've been in, in communications with Diamondback and others over the past year to get a, an additional 230 acres out there as well. This will be an important site for park space and the, and the trails that we're talking about. It also has natural playas on there, so we could have a greenbelt, maybe build an outdoor amphitheater in conjunction with the Wagner Noel. Sure wish we had that right now. And, and a lot of young people moving into our community and the, the arena will serve this purpose as well because it will be bigger, more seats than the Wagner Noel at 1800. Having opportunities for the, the young professionals and the young people who move into our community that we want them to stay, they need to have those amenities to exercise safely and to be able to go to rock concerts and other things that they're interested in, in a manner that they enjoy. And I think we might be able to, over the next 10 years or so, expand both on the Midland and the Odessa campus in a way that provides that for the, the two communities. This also has the opportunity to have housing for workforce, teachers, firefighters and others. If the assessment, and we, we don't, we don't have an assessment for this yet, this is, we don't have the land. So this is just early, just concepts to talk about at this time. But also commercial mixed-use real estate that can support some of these functions. And then the growth of the academic enterprise as we grow to 12,000 to 15,000 students on this campus, we'll need more space in both of these spaces. Workforce, applied research, training centers, all of that could be realized if we were able to acquire more space at the Midland campus and then connect that, you know, that work. You know, we are, before you today is an opportunity to talk a little bit about applied research, incubator innovation space. We are working at the seed with some other sources of funds to be able to really elevate the incubator, being able to spin off new businesses, being able to diversify the economy. That work is very connected to the work that we want to do in the library to get students involved and would-be entrepreneurs and the faculty undergraduate research. So that really is a connection to make sure that for the entire Permian Basin region, the university has the resources and the vision to become that workforce training, new business generate, new generator, economic development partner for this region. So those, that's all I have, Mayor. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And special thanks to Grow Odessa for giving us the, the seed money to do this study.
Absolutely, absolutely. The, and I mentioned that earlier in the, you know, in the, you know, in the presentation. $250,000 from Grow Odessa really has provided the, the, will provide the work product for us to, to start this dream together. So thanks, Erin, to your team and others who really already started to work really hard on that. We're, we're excited to see the, the, the work that you have.
Any questions from council? Thank you, Dr. Woodley and your team. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm trying to, there, oh, there we go.
Okay, consider a state and local DTA task force agreement. Chief Kirke.
Good morning. This agreement is with HIDA, the High End小孩子 Drug Trafficking Area Task Force. It's basically DEA and the other local agencies in the area, just simply to fight the drug to in the Permian Basin. We all know that there is an issue and this allows us work, to work cooperatively with them. There is mention in here about availability of funds for overtime and generally we get between $10,000 and $15,000 a year from HIDA to help defer some of the overtime costs. When we are working with HIDA, basically we are working those targets that we would work anyway. So it's, we're not deferring our resources to another area.
Any questions for chief? Thank you very much, chief.
Thank you.
Item three, consider an economic development agreement with ODC and Apergy. Mr. Burnett.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting us come here. The Odessa Development Corporation at their meeting last week approved an agreement. I think you have it maybe to look at there, but I'm not sure. With Apergy, for a business expansion, actually it's a relocation and consolidation of all of their facilities from Midland into Odessa. Also some lab capabilities into their facility in Odessa from their Oklahoma facility. So it is about a $1.8 million capital investment. They will be maintaining jobs and creating jobs. The compliance committee met, vetted the project and approved a $1 million business retention and job creation and capital investment grant for a million dollars for five years. The ODC approved that, like I said, last week. They'll be doing 300,000 the first year, 200,000 for the next two years and then, next three years, and then a 100,000 at the end, I think would make a total for, for a man. It's a little different structure. It's all paid in arrears as we always do after the jobs and the capital investment is created and done, but they are breaking it out a little bit differently over the, the span of time there. So pretty straightforward. The company is excited about it. I think that they have actually changed, it will be Champion X instead of Apergy. They have bought another company and they're bringing the two together and this will be a large facility in Odessa.
Great. Questions? Okay, item four, consider a third training facility grant with UTPB. Mr. Burnett.
I think Dr. Woodley is still on here. They have come to the ODC for some workforce training and maker space and different breakouts of some of their campus space that's not being used to reutilize some of the library, et cetera. This was a, a long process over several months with the compliance committee and staff and Dr. Woodley and her team with Wendell and Tatum to go over different aspects of this and tweak it and get it to a form that the ODC and compliance really does like. It's a, a $2.1 million ask, so it's 700,000 over three years for a, a lot of different facility upgrades and changes and workforce development capabilities. I'll let Dr. Woodley elaborate on that if she's still on here, if she'd like.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thanks so much. I mean, I, this is a, an initiative that we call the Wise Initiative, Workforce and Innovation for a Stronger Economy. You know, part of what I mentioned earlier is the aspiration of the university is to be able to grow particularly our applied research footprint in the way that serves as workforce and economic development driver in the region. In order to do that, we need to be able to get those connections going and having the spaces available to be able to really drum up that entrepreneurial spirit between our students and our faculty and also members of the community. We already have, you know, the Small Business Development Center that helps in some ways, but we're pulling out and investing already in the additional faculty and the expertise to be able to do more. One of the things that we are focusing on is a workforce training and an advanced manufacturing center. This is in conjunction with the College of Engineering and George Nana. This will include the opportunity to have a space for workforce training that would provide certifications that are stackable onto a, a, a degree as well. And so that, that is kind of a theme that you'll see through all of the work. This is maybe true in cybersecurity, some other multidisciplinary opportunities here, geology, bioinformatics, you know, computer science, as I said, cybersecurity. These are some of the things that can, you know, be taught and be implemented in these spaces. So the advanced manufacturing center is one thing. That is a, a training, stackable credentials, being able to really spin off businesses, new economic opportunities for the Permian Basin. But the innovation center and the incubator and the maker space, again, which is part of that, is the first floor of our library building. We're having that designed right now so that we can really figure out what do we need to put in there with the 3D printers and the technology and all of the things associated with really connecting entrepreneurship and innovation in a multidisciplinary way on our campus, particularly between faculty and students and, and the community. And so this grant, this $2.1 million grant over three years will be combined with other funds that it will leverage. It will include permanent university fund from the University of Texas system that will go into this project. We also have a $500,000 grant from Blackstone Charities, really focused on really elevating innovation here on our campus. We're excited about it. We're happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
Okay, are there any questions?
And just again to mention that the ODC approved this unanimously at their last board meeting.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you, Dr. Woodley. Thank you, Wesley.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Wesley. Sandy.
Thank you.
Item five, consider approval of the general development plan for ODC for 2021. Mr. Carroll. Mr. Carroll.
Good morning, Mayor and city council. Thanks for having me. Um, at the last ODC meeting this past week, uh, they did approve the 2020, 2021, uh, Odessa, the general development plan for the Odessa Development Corporation. Um, new for this year, uh, on page four of the general development plan, it'll be, it'll be page 58 of your packet. We did add a non-discrimination policy as was requested. Um, and then, uh, on top of that, in the new general development plan, we updated everything, obviously, as far as dates, and then went in and put the new, all the contractors we had from the past year, we updated their objectives, missions and goals. And then we also added the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and Black Chamber of Commerce. Um, you will notice that the business challenge is not there right now. There's going to be more discussion on, uh, when and how that's going to be funded through ODC. Uh, but we do have, uh, those seven contractors and that's the update to the general development plan for this year.
Okay, are there any questions for Mr. Carroll? Okay, uh, item six, consider the approval of the annual budget for the Economic Development Contractor Agreements of ODC for 2021. Mr. Carroll.
Um, Cindy, did you want to go first or would you like me to present the, uh, the contractor agreements?
No, I can go first. Uh, good morning. So, uh, at the last meeting of the ODC board, they approved, uh, the proposed budget that was put before them. Um, I believe that was included in y'all's packet. Do y'all need me to share screen on that?
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we lowered the sales tax revenue projection from 12 million down to nine and a half million for next year. Um, there wasn't a lot of changes in the, uh, regular operating type expenditures. Um, they approved the Odessa Chamber of Commerce at 973,000, 605 Motrin at 142,500, uh, the Small Business Development Center at 108, 183. Uh, the, uh, marketing was CBA, um, at 894, 294. One of the reasons that's higher is due to the Permian fuels America campaign that is going on. Um, they awarded 50,000 under marketing, uh, uh, expenses for both the Black Chamber of Commerce and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, uh, facade grants of 100,000, infrastructure grants at 100,000. And then, of course, their main, uh, budget line item is business incentives at 50 million. And so that, uh, projected budget leaves an ending fund balance of 9.1 million. And this is typical, uh, to budget a large amount in business incentives in case anything comes up during the year that they would like to take care of. They do have some, um, contracts and assignments already in place that would use, utilize part of that 50 million. That would include, uh, some reserves held for Tech Dot, uh, to help with some of that funding, uh, the work, the workforce, housing, infrastructure, uh, incentives, and then the other, uh, grants that have been awarded in the past. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Cindy?
Cindy, did, um, did ODC talk about, uh, what the basis was for their revenues? I mean, you know, they get 20% of what we get and we, we budgeted something lower than that, but I mean, they have enough fund balance that even if they don't get that 9.2, they'll still be okay. But were they aware at the time of what, how we had reduced our budget?
Um, so their budget reduction was about 21% from their prior year. Uh, but their budget hasn't been as, um, conservative as we've done with the city of Odessa in the past. So, um, we, uh, went back in line with kind of what was there in fiscal year 16, 17. They had a total of 9.6 in actual, um, so that's kind of where we put it right now. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Carroll, do you have anything else on item number six?
Um, just that, uh, you also have the form contract that ODC will be using. That contract's been updated to reflect this new year. And of course, as Cindy had already mentioned, uh, the amounts that we, that ODC awarded, uh, to their contractors. Um, but we didn't want to put every specific contract in. Uh, it will obviously just be a, an addition of what entity we're giving that money to and the amount of money we're giving them in that contract. And that form contract has already been approved by ODC as well.
Oh, so Robert, this is Peggy.
Yes, ma'am.
On these projects like the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, I just don't want there to be issues like there have been in the past. Are we awarding them 50,000? Are we, are we allocating 50,000 for any economic development projects they come up with? Cause that's been a real issue in the past.
We are, we are allocating 50,000. As with all of our other, um, contractors, we will, they will, uh, send in an invoice, uh, quarterly showing what they use that money for, and it will be there if they need, uh, there was a discussion if they need more money, um, then we can, uh, adjust the budget or amend the budget, uh, and give them more money. Uh, otherwise, like a lot of the other ones, this is a projection of what they'll use, uh, and therefore, um, uh, it will be, it's, it is allocated to them. It has not been awarded. It won't be given out in a lump sum. Um, that we treated like every other contractor.
Okay, so basically the criterion for it to be used for economic development is still there.
Uh, so they're, because they're under, sorry, go ahead, Cindy.
Peggy, they actually awarded, the board awarded these under the marketing caption. And so, um, they wanted to, uh, utilize, um, both of these, uh, chambers to help, uh, bridge the gap with both of those ethnicities and try to, um, bring them more into the fold. And they're going to work with the Small Business Development Center as well. So, um, the board didn't feel like the, their proposals quite fit to, uh, the general economic development agreements that we do, like with the Odessa Chamber of Commerce. Uh, but they wanted to start that process to build them towards that within, within their chambers and what they do, uh, but didn't feel like they were quite there. So they are using this more as a marketing to try to, um, bridge some of those gaps and then build them towards being able to do that.
Okay, good. Thanks. I, I was concerned about that because of the, in the past. So under the marketing budget, there is different criteria. And so thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any, any more questions? Okay, item seven, consider a resolution establishing a maximum tax rate of point zero, or 0.477115.
Mr. Edgman would like to say a few words.
Oh, sure. I didn't see him on there. Go ahead, Tim. You're muted.
Do what? Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yeah. Okay. On those two, the Black Chamber and Hispanic Chamber, we've gone into strict detail of how we're going to be monitoring that. Wes has volunteered to help us. Uh, we met with, uh, both of them and we went through the criteria and everything. We feel like they're fully undersh- understand, but their proposals were a little, uh, less than what we, what I expected. And being through the Hispanic Chamber deal, I will, we, we, it is very stringently maintained that we'll be watching those expenses and they aren't done in the proper manners and we will have to take, take action on that. But it's a, it's a way to reach out to them and I, and our board thinks that there's some opportunities that they can reach out and help us in areas that, uh, would be very beneficial. So we, we voted unanimously to give them a try.
Thanks, Tim. I'm really glad that we're doing that because, you know, they're such a big part of our community, that the ethnicity, especially the Hispanic chamber. So I really appreciate the effort to try to bring them in the fold and coach them along.
Okay. And thanks, easy to go for Wes to helping us out on that as well. Thanks.
Thank you for Wes. Okay, um, item seven, consider a resolution estab- establishing a maximum tax rate of point, uh, 0.477115 for fiscal year 2021. Ms. Muncy.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is, um, the same, uh, rate that we proposed at the workshop. Um, this is the calculation per the Ector County Appraisal District. I will tell you that they are still not calling that a final yet. Um, they don't feel like the rate changes, but there's a change in the notices that go out to the public. And, um, so I talked to, um, a legal person with Texas Municipal League, uh, last week, and we were going through one of the forms that was put out by the comptroller's office. And I said, well, the, the comptroller's, uh, form does not make sense. If you vote in the no new revenue rate, which is what council chose to do, then you're not required to hold a public hearing because it's considered a no new revenue rate. And so, um, and that's what was put into Senate bill two. Well, the form still says you will hold a public hearing on this date. So there's some errors in their form and this seems to be what's holding up the software vendors that provide these notices, calculations and information to all the appraisal districts. So we think that's probably kind of what the holdup is. Um, I spoke with them again yesterday. They still were not finalizing it. We do have, um, some time in order to post that information before we, um, talk about that on the September 8th council meeting. Um, so basically we're still at the calculated rate that they came up with as a no new revenue rate, and that's what we're going forward with at this time.
So Cindy, the public will have an opportunity at one of our meetings though to be heard about this, right?
Yes, they, it will not be a public hearing. So if they want to speak to it, they will have to, um, you know, we used to do the fill out cards, but they'll have to notify us that they want to, a moment to speak at that meeting.
So will we be able to, will we be sure that people understand they can speak to it?
I, we'll make that clear whenever we post the, uh, the meeting information.
Okay. Because I think that, you know, that transparency is probably pretty, pretty important right now.
It is. And, and, um, it's something that, uh, it's going to impact your residential people as we talked about at the budget workshop, uh, and that residential values went up. So they're still going to see an increase, uh, but overall it's not an increase to this, to the city on, on properties that were in existence last year. So we actually do have an increased tax amount. We talked about that before due to the, uh, new property that came on and adjustments made to the prior year's tax, um, levy. So, okay.
Go ahead, Cindy.
So, um, we will, so what's going to transpire is at the August 25th meeting, we will have our budget hearing, uh, a public hearing on the budget, and we will also set our maximum tax rate to be the no new revenue rate. That's just a vote of the council to set the proposed rate. Okay. Uh, you're required to do that. And then in the notice that we have to put in the paper, it will show how the council members voted on that rate. Then when we get to the September 8th meeting, we will actually adopt our budget. We will adopt our, uh, water sewer and solid waste rate increases, and we will ratify the tax amount increase, uh, the dollar amount that's in the budget that we're going to adopt at that meeting. Um, and then we will take the first vote on the tax rate. Okay, so it will be a, a fun-filled meeting on September the 8th. And then on the 15th, at the work session, we'll have the second vote on the tax rate. And that's just because we always adopt our tax rate by an ordinance and our, uh, city charter says ordinance will take two votes. So, okay. So the next item, I'm sorry, Mayor is eating the budget.
No, that's fine.
Um, so we, um, I'm hoping all of you, uh, got your proposed budgets delivered to you. Um, the only changes that we've, uh, made in the proposed budget were due to the, um, to the tax rate change. Uh, it is at the no new revenue rate. And so that changed our general fund, uh, balance, our budget to a balanced budget. Revenues equal expenditures. So it's at a zero, uh, net effect. Okay. Um, and then the other change that was made to the budget from what you got at, at the workshop was in the water and sewer fund. Um, we had discussed, um, putting that at a revenues versus expenditures zero budget by increasing the infrastructure repair or maintenance from 2 million to $3 million. And we had to make a slight adjustment in revenues to cover that. And so it's a balanced budget. It comes down to a net effect of zero. And that's the only changes that we've made to the proposed budget from what you had at the, uh, council workshop. But I will answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Ms. Muncy? Okay.
And I think the only other thing to add to this is if they come out with their final, hopefully before next Tuesday's meeting, um, then if it changes by any reason, then I will, um, get that information out to council and it will be there for our budget hearing. Okay.
Okay. Any questions? That concludes the meeting. So, um, we are adjourned.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.